The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 a.m. and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call 915-546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabian Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number 2, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, October 25th, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting a special open session. Today, at the judge's request, we're going to go ahead and start with item number four. Receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department on grants for the Economic Impact Fund Policy and the Healthy Human Financing Initiative Policy. Provide final feedback to the department on the grants. Funding for the policies is available in the General Fund, General Administrative Economic Impact Fund.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Quinones, the Director of Economic Development. I'll ask staff to introduce themselves.
Arturo Marquez, economic analyst.
In front of you is, we've been working on the Economic Impact Policy. And one thing I wanted to do, since this is very important and it's going to kind of tell itself the story, I want to let the court know is, I think as we've worked this policy, we've realized that a large initiative focus has been with the other initiative, which is the Fresh Food Financing Initiative, has taken up a lot of effort and has also brought a lot of attention and focus to us. So what we wanted to do is make sure you understand, what we're going to be proposing is really two policies. One, for the Economic Impact Fund, and I believe the Fresh Food Initiative, because we have a set of guidelines that still need to be massaged a little bit, that in itself is coming out to be its own policy. Okay? And I think as we go through it, you realize why. So let us start with that. Obviously, the court's leadership in getting us to look at the Economic Impact Fund brought us to why we're doing this. And there's two things that really push out, come up very clearly to us, is to create a deal closing mechanism for the county as it acts as a partner with our other regional EDO partners to create opportunities for critical projects that are really in competition with other regions. The Economic Impact Fund can be that gap that could bring the deal that our region is looking for. So if we're, let's just say, give you an example, competing with the likes of Phoenix or Dallas for a very, a strong project that's bringing in high investment and bringing in quality jobs, and we know it's just us and the other community, that Economic Impact Fund can be the difference. The other part of the Economic Impact Fund is, we see is, those projects which may not fit the natural key industries that we have in our economic incentives policy, but are very unique, but play a role in terms of bringing and creating economic development opportunities to our region. And those that don't fit that mold, this is where the Economic Impact Fund can be your catalyst as commissioners to take that on. So what we're saying is, we're trying to leave it broad enough so that when we have a project that's very unique, you all can take that initiative to say, we want to use the Economic Impact Fund for that purpose. So we love that.
Excuse me for interrupting. I believe the Commissioners' Court wants to go directly to the HFFI first, if we may?
On the HFFI, this last month, we've been working very closely with Commissioner Scott's office, with the American Red Cross, the Institute for Healthy Living, and looking at this initiative very closely. And obviously, we see what is the need for it, ladies, to develop, identify food access initiatives, food access projects, that will serve the low-income communities of El Paso County. And the idea would be is to use this mechanism to help pay for construction or establishment for rehabilitation, or an expansion of an existing facility, per se, like a grocery store that's already in existence. You can do an expansion, and you can do improvements to that facility to create that type of project, as well as infrastructure. So the second one, some of the things that have come up during our discussions with our other partners is, what is its intended use? So we have a listing here of items that have been identified. We don't have an issue, I think, the purpose of it would be, would be very broad, is to do anything such as site assembly, equipment, staffing, including staffing that are directly related to the development or the expansion of a food, Fresh Food Initiative, security involved in that development, inventory, working capital, marketing, and nutrition education. Those are all to us clearly uses that I think would work well in what's the intended use for this HFFI. To the right, you see a table showing disbursement of funds. Now, I want to tell you that most of the work that's been done on this HFFI had been done by our partners, by the folks from the Institute for Healthy Living, by the American Red Cross we have here.
Heart Association.
Chris?
American Heart Association and Red Cross.
Sorry. Apologize, American. And so that's a table that shows you three different types of funding uses. First one is recoverable grants, interest-bearing loans, and also grants. Obviously, to us, the easiest is grants. The part about the loans is the tricky part at this point. We're not really ready to move forward with that mechanism, but I think it's okay for us to look at it as, let's leave it in there as we work into the policy. At a future point, if and when we line up all the ducks, we can decide who will take on the part of the loan tosses and whatnot. Their recoverable grant, that's just a mechanism. I think we do that, we can work that in, working with our legal department to establish some type of clawbacks. So per se, if we get into a situation where we incentivize an applicant, and halfway through the project, they fall through the cracks, they don't come through on their side of the deal, then we have a way to recapture that.
And it's not just clawbacks, it's also, I mean, it's basically, you could also look at it as a interest-free loan. I mean, basically, the idea is, you know, if a company comes in and they want $100,000, we give them $100,000. And after we check everything, make sure that their finances are okay, we give them $100,000. But the idea is that they're successful, and when they are successful, that money is basically given back to the county and replenishes the blood. So there's the clawback, but there's also that, basically, it can be looked at as also a non-interest.
Yeah, well, County Judge Commissioners, I want to bring attention to the eligible organizations type column. It's for profit and not for profit. We usually work well, our department, economically alone, work for profit. I don't know how, not for profit, we change the landscape. Just a comment there.
Is that the end of the presentation? That is really the end of the presentation. We attach, as handoffs, there is a program guidelines that we've been working on. Our county attorney's office did submit, lay to us after 5:00 p.m. a edited version of the guidelines. We haven't really had time to go through them. I think we want, we want to continue working with our partners to get this done the right way. So we may need just a few more weeks to really bring it back and, at some point, present it to Commissioners for adoption.
The changes that the legal made are not necessarily substantive changes. They don't change anything with the operation of the program. It was just some suggestions with, trying to relieve some confusion that might have been, might have been had, but the changes that legal made are not, they don't, they don't alter the program or the operation in any way. So.
You know, that's after, they are not substantive, just as the Commissioners said, it's more consistency throughout the policy. Questions about just making sure we're consistent, there aren't any, there can't be any differentiation about who's responsible for all.
And we also handed out a number of support letters from different organizations within town that would like you all to look at. You know, some of these organizations are organizations that could benefit from something like this, that are interested in something like this. And we also have, we've been speaking with the CDFI called People Fund, and they, that's all they do. They're, they, all they do is CDFI work. So they're, which is community development financing. And they're, they're willing to partner with us, and they're also willing to put up $500,000 in loans. So by creating this policy, we've already doubled our money towards this type of project if we, if we're able to do this and if we, if we work with People Fund. And so the idea would be that, that, you know, they could, they could do a loan piece, and we could do a grant piece. And so if a company or organization wants to participate, you know, they can go through the application process, they would send their application to the county, the county would then work with the financial institution to make sure that they're financially feasible and viable for the program. They would also work with the Institute for Healthy Living to make sure that they comply with the requirements of the program. And, you know, the CDFI could give, you know, if they want $100,000 to see if I could give them a $50,000 loan, and we could give them a $50,000 grant, and, you know, match basically what the CDFI is willing to give them in a loan. So I don't know if anybody has any, any questions at this point, but.
Yeah. Sure.
Commissioner Allen. Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, one of the things that I consider, I'm very supportive of the program. I mean, I want to work, but I've got some questions, and I brought it up to the, to those folks sitting in the back. One of my biggest issues here is oversight supervision. Is there any sanctions that, other than clawbacks, and we can recover some of the money, that these businesses that agree to take our money, this is taxpayer money, are actually selling the foods and not replacing it by things like Spam, Cheetos, or what have you? And is there any possibility, is there any possibility of having a mobile, or two mobile, one on the east side, one on the west side, that have these kinds of nutritional good food, they go from place to place? But as it is right now, there's no way I'm going to vote for it. I just want to protect the taxpayer money, saying that these people are taking our money, and they're going to be responsible for what they sell. You know, I don't want it in a closet in the back, yeah, they've got the vegetables in the back. You know, I just don't see a mechanism in there. And this is things that are brought to you before, and I still don't see it. So unless there's some changes there, to really protect us.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
I can speak from back here.
If you come forwards, we'll get you on the mic.
And we apologize, we're undergoing a reconfiguration of the room, so it's a little, we're not quite there yet.
So I stand here, feel a little awkward, but, yes, Commissioner Allen, Christopher Walker, American Heart Association. Since meeting with you and hearing your concerns, but just want to reiterate that we feel the same way. And after our discussions, both publicly and then in U11, we did add in there, just a couple of things. One, the required partnership with the Institute for Healthy Living. Their job is to ensure that any potential applicant, they need to be satisfied that this is actually increasing healthy food access for those who need it. So before this even comes to you, it will have the Institute for Healthy Living's sample approval. Of course, they can't guarantee it, but they're going to look at it and say, we think this is a, you know, this is our recommendation, this has a high chance of doing what is intended by this program. The second piece is, we, after our discussions, we added a provision that if there are reporting requirements, I think it's quarterly, to the county, if it is determined that the entity that took the taxpayer dollars is not abiding by the agreement that the county, that the court signs off on, they have to repay back all money plus high percent interest. So that would be, there is that sanction to where, they can't just take the money and run. Now, we got the money, we can do whatever we want. There's a continued reporting requirement to make, to be accountable to the County of El Paso, to make sure. to the County of El Paso, to make sure that they continue to do what they agreed with the court to do. And I want to say it's quarterly, but it is in there that they're, or in every year, the Institute for Health, it is quarterly. And every year, the Institute for Healthy Living will present a sort of status update, a yearly annual status update to the court so that the court can see where the money is going, how it's being used, and to the extent that it does increase food access.
I saw some of that, and that's good, you're going in the right direction. But again, unless, if they're self-reporting, I didn't hear you say right now that we will be out there on a quarterly basis, we'll be out there on a surprise basis. We will be out there to look at what they've got, because what they're telling us and what we're seeing are two different things. So that's the bottom line.
So I think if there's some sort of, you know, we, if the court like to build that capacity into where there's some more proactive accountability measures, we can.
I certainly feel that way. I mean, the court may feel otherwise, but I just feel some sort of inspection sort of mechanism is built in that they're subject to surprise inspections.
And I want to say, and after our discussions, I did do some research about this across the country, and by no means is this a guarantee what would happen in El Paso. But these sort of clawback provisions are, one, good policy and they're prevalent in all these types of policies. But there really hasn't been much of an issue just because most of the people applying aren't going to have in the back of their head. They have to go before the court, they have to talk to the IHL, or wherever the food access organization is. And by no means is it guaranteed, but we have seen that this does typically self-select for people with good intentions. So I understand that we want to make sure that we can't count on that, but I did want to acknowledge that that's what we have seen, and we would hope it is the case going forward, but of course, we want to make sure that that is.
And I appreciate it, thank you. And like I say, I'm very supportive, as I told you, but good intentions in reality are two different things.
Absolutely.
Oh, and by the way, just to, Commissioner Hagerty is not here yet. He's at breakfast meeting, I meant to say that, apologize.
I think that that's definitely something that we can add in, we can maybe work with Institute for Healthy Living to strengthen that provision and make sure that, you know, that the, you know, that the requirements are being met throughout the, you know, throughout the loan or the time that they're using, they're using our money. I mean, they're going to be different, you know, somebody may take the money for a construction purpose, or, you know, somebody may take, may want the money for, like you're saying, like setting up a mobile, a mobile unit or something like that. And I definitely think that it's important to make sure that, that they're doing what they, what they said. So I think that that's something that we can definitely add in, in addition to.
And I had a couple of questions too. So I think that the document is significantly improved from where we were during our last discussion. There's so much more detail and it outlines specifically what the process will look like for an applicant. On page two, it talks about, so this is a pilot program, and if we don't have a CDFI, which it sounds like we potentially haven't identified, but if we didn't, that it would be administered directly by the Economic Development Department. So what does that mean? I mean, are we then going to be issuing loans? And I know that was a conversation we had before. So then what does that mean, that we would be, if we don't have that CDFI to do that, then it falls on us to be issuing these loans, or who's doing that?
It would just be grants. If it fell on just the county, it would be, it would be just grants. I mean, we left, we left the loan section in there, like Jose said, for if, in case in the future, we decide to.
Establish.
To establish a loan-making program. But for the time being, if we don't have a CDFI, then the county would only be participating in granting money, not loan.
That's correct.
In, on page four, when it talked about eligible activities, staffing was one of those. I don't know why that kind of just jumped out to me, but I'm not sure. I think it would be ideal for any entity that uses this money to be able to do as much as possible to promote healthy foods. But to pay for staff, I wondered if, is that common? I kind of would rather the money go toward infrastructure, having the foods out on the floor, and that they would already designate staff. I do think the training is viable, so that staff that they already have in place can be trained to advocate for the work that they're doing? But to pay to hire staff, I don't know, is that typical, or?
I don't, I don't know if it's typical, I don't want to speak to that, but I will tell you, I do think there's another avenue to help with staffing. I spoke to Leila from Workforce Development, or, yeah, Workforce Development, and she said they have programs that could help employers pay for staffing. And I was telling her about this particular program, and I said, you know, that may be something where one of your programs would really dovetail into something we're trying to do so that if a business wanted to add more staffing, for example, they're going to add a large produce section to a store where it doesn't currently exist, and they need staff to help keep it stocked and, for example. That they have programs that could actually help pay for the staffing, especially, and they're especially interested in some of our communities, outlined communities, to help with employment in that, in those areas. And she said that they have funds available, I mentioned this to Jose, that we need to work with them to see if there's some way we could dovetail the programs together to help support the healthy food financing initiative. So, go ahead.
Pat, if I'm not mistaken, that program is only good for three months.
It would pay for the staff for the first three months, but that's when you'd be the startup, just show that, like, I'm getting a return on this and be able to, for the business to be able to develop some, basically, some reserve to help, show that they're going to be able to look on the staffing.
Yeah, I followed up with Leila Melendez, and she did confirm that. She also told me that it's really based on a curriculum, so it could be a curriculum that the applicant develops, and they'll work with them to help pay the salaries for the employees while they're going to train here.
Chris, did you have any feedback on the staffing? I mean, we don't have to keep it in there if you don't want, but.
The one piece, you know, since this is an economic development tool, and this can be the creation of a new business, a lot of times, it might be an existing business that wants to expand their current operations, but a lot of these are small businesses, don't have the capital to do so. So hiring additional staff, so produce departments, for instance, are the most labor-intensive and the lowest profit margins of a grocery store. You have that turnover, you have to have some money making sure that the produce is good. So that can be a challenge. It's a lot easier to sell fam, like Commissioner Allen said, because it stays in the shelf, you don't have to look after it. So I will say that if the court isn't comfortable with it, I don't think it's an essential thing that has to be in there. But on the flip side, if it's in there, by no means is this guaranteed anybody will get money. They would still have to say, this is our plan. And if the court is not comfortable with, you're just using this money to hire a bunch of staffers, then they're not, it's not going to fly. So, you know, I think there is some utility in there, but if that makes the court uncomfortable, then I also see, I understand your perspective, and it doesn't have to be.
And I'm okay with leaving it in there, especially because there will be checks and balances while the application comes up the chain. But you're right, that's the one thing I wouldn't want to do, is to have an existing business come in and say, well, this is a great opportunity for us to hire four more people, and we'll just put some more fruits and vegetables out. And so I think insofar that we can gauge that and make sure that there's more value in what they're applying the money toward, then that would be great. But again, we can track that as the application is submitted.
Can I jump in a little? Gaby La Caiggo's been with the Institute for Healthy Living today. And you can kind of envision, this isn't a subsidy going forward for the business. So this is kind of to get them jump-started with, you know, fresh and healthy foods and produce and things like that. But it could even be something like, we need to pay for half of this person's salary because we're not there yet, you know, adding a new section. But I don't think by any means, the expectation is that it's something that would be continual over time. I think it's a one-time, like, to just kind of get them to write.
And then just a couple of other questions. On page seven, and I know that we're talking about this being a pilot program, and it would be grants primarily at the onset. So under the repayment section, if we have more than one or just one, we would then negotiate the terms of the repayment with that specific entity. There's not like a five-to-10-year standard, it's, we will base it on each individual entity. That's right, yeah, okay. And then right under that, it talks about, if the recipient is concerned about repayment, they will be expected to communicate this as soon as possible to El Paso County and their Economic Development Department or CDFI to determine the best course of action. I mean, that gave me a little pause only in that I feel like they would need to be able to repay regardless. I don't know that there would be any room, at least in my opinion, to renegotiate what should have been repayment back to the taxpayers. But I'm not sure if I'm not reading my foot correctly, or.
So, so we may, we may do that, even if it's not in the policy, but you're saying, don't communicate it in the policy where it's like, well, this is the terms, but we have this other option.
Yeah, it just seems like you agreed to take this money toward a specific purpose. You knew that you'd have to pay it back over, you know, whatever timeframe is agreed upon, that if all of a sudden they can't pay, I don't know if there's room to come back and say, hey, guess what? We found out that we can't pay anymore, can we talk about it? I mean, if it's a grant, then that's one thing, but if it's a loan, then.
Right, I think in all cases, we should say, we could take that out. And then, of course, the court always reserves the right to sit down with the party, and this would actually be in the contract portion, that they reserve the right to sit down, back down and look at terms in, as long as both parties agree in writing, to whatever the reevaluation of terms are.
I think that helps it set forth in terms of the expectations in the actual policy itself, so that it's clear for applicants, people that want to participate, this is what our standard is, and it's really the direction from the court, so that that is part of it in the contract. You know, add it in in the contract, it's helpful.
I don't want anything in the contract that says that you can't pay with, like, or, that's more like.
And that's what it sounded like when I read that, it just gave me pause. Like, no, I feel like we need to be very.
Right, so delete the sentence where it says, if the recipient is a recoverable man or the other one is concerned about repayment, they'll be expected to communicate this. Leave the last sentence about, it could be converted to a grant under certain, I wouldn't even say extraordinary circumstances, but certain circumstances. And then adding, adding some clause into the policy about the parties may renegotiate, or may, something that makes it clear that we may sit back down, because it could even be that someone's being, it's so successful that they don't want, they end up not wanting a 10-year loan, and they want to renegotiate with us to pay it off early.
And that's okay, just not the consideration of no payment at all.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sure those clawbacks are important, and even making sure that there's some kind of, aside from the clawbacks, that we have some interest in any capital that they have, or the building, if, you know, if we needed, I don't know, I just, I don't want the taxpayers to be out the money because they close shop one day and leave. And we've seen that happen with some of our 381 agreements, where thankfully, we didn't pay out upfront, but in this case, we will be. And then they close shop and they leave, and there really isn't any explanation. And I would just hate for that to be the case after we've already given counsel right to someone.
And this, and this, again, just to reiterate, this is only if we start doing loans ourselves. Because, because the money that, the money that we have, the way, the way we're looking at it right now, if we, if we, we're just looking at doing grants, right? And so this is only if the county decides to start doing loans. The CDFI that decides to take their money and do loans, that's their, they make their own deals, right?
But there must be some reason, even with grants, to be able to.
This wording is in grants, and what you're saying, and what we're hearing, is that if we give a grant of $100,000, and it's three years in, and the market, the bottom call's out of the market, there's some issue, what we would have in the contract is, and this is standard language in all of our contracts right now, is that the parties may renegotiate the terms of the contract upon agreement and in writing. And it doesn't say for good, for bad, either way. The county may say, you know what, we're willing to give them, they're going to pull through this, we're willing to give them an extra year and lower their payback terms for this recoverable grant. Or it may be that is the opposite in a positive way, again, where they say, we want to increase our repayment terms. And we would just have to, that, and that would be in the contracts.
Normal, regardless, I mean, they're going to.
So you don't need it in there.
The idea is, well, there are two different types of grants, there are.
And the question I asked was, is the recoverable, yeah, just to make that clear.
Because, because this is, I mean, are we talking about grants or are we talking about loans?
We're talking about recoverable grants.
Right now, the grants, the initial one-year pilot, what that looks like in terms of the grant, is it, are we being repaid the money that's given to them? Or is it just a grant that we won't see a return?
Well, it depends on what kind of grant we decide to give them, but if we give them a recoverable grant, then yes, the idea is if they are successful, and, and, you know, over a, over a certain period of the term, wherever we decide, you know, on a case-to-case basis, then the idea is yes, for them to pay the grant back and replenish the fund, so we can continue to use the money for future projects.
And then, just the last comment. There are a couple of questions, but I think we've answered them. On page eight and nine, the timeline, just the dates, that's just a small fix, January of 2019, not 18. And then on page nine, that's January 2020, not 2019. But again, this was incredibly helpful. It gave, as I was reading it, I had questions, and then they were slowly answered as I was reading the document. So this is much more fleshed out than the last conversation.
Right, gotta give credit to Chris and the IHL folks, they studied a lot of that.
And the version that you all are looking at in your backups that we're looking at right now is a prior version. It's before the, it's before the comments that were added and the changes that were made by Legal. And also before the conversation that we had with People Fund, the CDFI, talking about, because the idea was we were, we were thinking that possibly they might, you know, be able to run like our grant. If we did, if we did loans, they would be able to run our loan program, but they don't want to do that. And so the idea is that we just stick with the grants for now. If we want to create a loan program in the future, we can do that. But this, and then the CDFI will do the loan with their own money. And so there's a, there's a red line, there's a new, new version, which is the, which is the paper handoff we gave to you, and it should be on the backup soon, right?
It's online right now.
Okay.
It's ready to meet the.
So, so some of the, some of the stuff that you're asking questions about with the loans, if you want to see it in here, because we took the loan section out for our purposes. Just don't want you to be confused.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
And so there's no action, obviously, today on this item, but it seems like there are still some items to clean up and then get that new version back. Does the court want to see this come back at the next Thursday meeting? Or do you all think that once the red line version has been cleaned up and then some of the discussion points we've had today and shared with, with staff, that we can take this to a Monday meeting for action? Commissioner Allen, you have some.
I'm for another Thursday meeting.
Do you have some question? Yes.
I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate all the discussion, because it's really helped me out. I think I have similar concerns. Betsy communicated to you, and I asked the county attorney for some more clarification. I think at the last meeting, Signe was here, and she was kind of not sure where we were going with all of this, because there's a lot of unanswered questions. I know there's, like I said, my, my comments are not to second-guess the Commissioners' court. You all, I think what you're doing is very plausible and plaudible. You're basically doing something that's really, just like the 381s, you're trying to provide that economic development initiative. My concern is, is that none of us have to come back here and have the issue come back to us, that we're doing something that potentially. Is that we're doing something that potentially could be not appropriate. The money's out of the three D one agreements, there are special funds that are dedicated to that. General fund monies have ties to them a lot of times and they're very restrictive. I just want the county attorney to say, you know, give us a blessing on it. It's probably going to be a case-by-case basis that we have to look at all of this stuff. But when you talk about for-profits, knock-for-profits, these are public dollars. The, the court has the ability to declare a public purpose. And you identify what that purpose is and you hold them accountable. We're talking about loans? I mean, economic development can, can oversee that. But ultimately, is the auditor's office going to end up handling loans and dealing with getting those payments back? Are we going to have grants where we're actually donating or giving that money away to somebody who doesn't ever pay it back? I, I want to, I think we all want the answers to, to say that you can do this, you make the determination. It doesn't come back at any of us, that the funds were dispersed and is not questioned. I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, confident and comfortable that what we're doing is clearly within the statutes and doesn't violate anything. So I think this shows a lot of unanswered questions that we, I'd like to see the county attorney come forward and say, we don't see anything wrong with this. I think that's, it's all of our duty just to make sure that we've done that. And I was kind of surprised that when we got the policy, there was nothing stating the statutory authority or anything. I want to make sure this doesn't violate any of the three D ones where you can do it, but only under the three D one laws. Like I said, I, it's too, too many unanswered questions, I just want to make sure that we're all covered. And that's my, my intent, okay? I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a roadblock to any of this. I think what you're doing is a great idea, but want to make sure that we're all covered in the end.
Christina, have, have you had the chance to look into that?
Sure. Yeah, Christina Satch, Assistant County Attorney. In terms of what this program would be developed for and what it would be under, um, is our understanding and at least has we interpreted to be economic development initiative. And that is under a three eighty-one. If you look at the three eighty-one statute, it's very broad. It really provides a lot of, in my opinion, the way in terms of how the county can enter into these agreements, what it can enter into these agreements for. I think in terms of the public purpose and trying to move this forward, obviously that is a commissioner's court determination. I think you've laid that out and it's self-explanatory in terms of your policy itself, on what that is, what the purpose is and what you want to do it for. As we move forward with any other of these, um, grant recipients, uh, that it gets laid out, obviously in whatever agreement that we set out for that. We do that, you know, recitals, we do that, um, when the court approves and how you state it and how the policy is presented itself. I mean, I don't know if Mr. Dion is thinking of one particular purpose or one particular issue, but it is the case, as Mr. Dion has said, it's fact-specific. So as they come in, as the applicants come in and we do this evaluation and we look at that, those are the triggers or the issues that we would obviously have to evaluate. But from a general scope and from a general, um, I think, policy direction, it is my opinion that the court is, is fine in terms of moving it forward with that. But again, as we look at maybe some specific circumstances, we may have to pull back a little, be a little bit more careful, kind of comb through that a little bit more, um, to make that determination and to advise the court.
And just one more comment, Christina.
Yes, mhm.
Lee Sheffley in the past has said that when, when, when there's items that come up that are questionable, that the court is required to do a specific declaration of a public purpose.
Right.
So would that happen, have, have to happen for each, each agreement?
We could do that for each agreement, right? We can do that for each agreement where it's stated on the record. Um, there's also this idea or this theory that's a public-private partnership sort of idea. The court could take action in the future, for example. We'll walk through that where there's actually like a resolution and that there's a finding like for this particular initiative, X, Y, and Z, we find this to be, um, a public purpose.
And that's what I'm saying, I think that meets the test of the statute. And I, I'm, I'm not sure that it's been done yet. So all I'm saying is that possibly that would need to be done for this overall program.
Right. Absolutely, and that, that's the route we could take. But, you know, just speaking in general terms too, the court always makes those public, um, those findings of public purpose in a lot of circumstances where it's not necessarily stated. But for example, it's the court's action and their approval themselves that I think gives them that authority to say, okay, we've made this finding. Maybe doesn't need to be as explicit, but they do that in every instance. For example, some of their policy directions or initiatives, um, that they've taken on. But this may be something that we probably want to be formalized to sit back straight, so. Thank you.
Commissioner, you have a question?
No, you said I'm cramped.
Oh.
I feel very claustrophobic in the moment.
I, I think.
Something I'm working through internally, so, okay, okay.
I think the configuration of the rules.
I suppose that's what I reckon through, like.
It's still being worked on. It's a little, it's a, this is a test run today to see how it all worked out. Um, but back to the HFFI, so, uh, it sounds like folks want to go ahead and wait another month. And Jose, you started the conversation saying that you felt like you might need a little more time?
Yes, let's just make sure we work out all these little details that are still loose there. Um, and obviously, you know, we want to leave the policy broad like Commissioner Stout had suggested about. We're not doing any loans right now, but the policy can be left so that if in the future the commissioner's court decides to take on a project that is approached that says, hey, you'd like to ask for a loan from your, your, uh, your brand here, your program, uh, we'll need to look into that further. Obviously, uh, if we use a CDFI, there's a purchasing process, soliciting process that's involved. We need to make sure that we vet that correctly. I know the purchasing agent, um, made some comments about that to us, to make sure if there is, if you're all looking at several CDFIs, make sure that you comply with the Purchasing Act. And I'm sure that legal will, will walk us through correctly on that. But at this point, since we're not making any definitive decisions on the loan or the loan processing, uh, we're just establishing policy, uh, we don't need to make any decisions per se on that, okay? I just want to make sure the court's aware. As far as, um, meaning to the chapter three eighty-one code, the state code, uh, I think one thing that we can look at, the policy is maybe adding a purpose on how it ties into chapter three eighty-one code, that would also help. And, and just the, a, a resolution for every, um, applicant that comes to us would make sure that the court is standing firm ground in this forward, obviously.
Commissioner, if you wanted to.
Okay. Christina's saying that we, with the time the court adopts a policy, instead of a resolution each time, that at the time the court adopts a policy, they can make a public.
We'll build, we'll build it in maybe to be a kind of language to see how, to, just to make them formalize if there was official action, this is what the court has recognized to be a section.
I don't know if you wanted to.
Well, I mean, if, if, if folks think, if folks think that we need to, 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 um, push it back and, and wait, I mean, I want to make sure that everybody's on board, so, I mean, you know, um, there are some minor changes that need to be made. But I mean, if, if, if that's what, what folks want to do, then that's fine.
And I do think it's a great program, I think, for the record. My questions were solely just to, to get some clarity on some of these items. I think it could be very helpful, like, you know, as was explained before, it's been very successful in other parts of the country. Has a county ever done this that we know of in Texas?
Not in Texas.
Not in Texas?
And we're, we did a little research, see if, if this is, this may be the first county initiative. Uh, there have been local ones, but on the city level. Um, I will say I'm a little ignorant as to how counties work outside of Texas as to whether they'd be even able to do it, because I don't know non-Texas county law to the extent that I even know of in Texas. So, um, so this would be not the first local initiative in Texas, but I, city set down it, but it'll be the first county initiative in Texas.
Which is really great, but I think that's also partly what gives some.
We can't steal anyone's homework.
Walking slowly to make sure, yeah, that we're not, that, that we're doing it right so that there are no issues or questions down the road. Because we are providing public funds to an entity. And so I think that's where some of the questions come from. But I don't know that there's necessarily a question about, uh, the benefit that could come out of something like this. So, okay? So if there are no other questions, commissioners? Then we'll go ahead and, and wait another month, we'll bring this back in November. Um, and then if we can get a draft circulated prior to, maybe a week prior to, so that the court can provide any feedback to economic development, that would be great.
Yes, just, uh, it will be less than a month, it'll be, I think we're moving up next month's agenda to the holiday, November fifteenth. Just as a reminder. So, we'll get done.
Well, if we can get some of those questions answered and some of the stuff on, on here done, then we'll do that. And if we, the one thing I don't want to do though, and I'll just be very frank, is I don't want it to come back if we still have questions. So if we could get it done, I, because this is the second time we've done it. And so I, I, I appreciate the fact that we're having the dialogue, but I don't think it should come back if we're going to have the same questions and then bring in partners again and then postpone it for another month.
So, how, what's the best way for us? So do you want me to check with each one of you all? To see if you still, if, if our changes didn't meet your.
That would be ideal if you probably could meet with every member of the court that you see if they're, not to get a, a, not on, not on a vote.
Not against us, just to make sure that has this answered your question before we bring it back.
Questions have been answered. Yeah, regardless of whether or not a member is voting for it or against it, but just to get some feedback. Is that?
And, and I will be honest, um, just as far as timelines go, it concerns me if basically we're going to give it, we have two weeks to make the changes and give back to you all and also have legal review. And you all then will have one week before the meeting and we have to have the agenda posted before, you know, if it's on the fifteenth, we generally have the, what's our posting, Caesar, for the fifteenth?
I mean, the, the legal review's been, been done. The only, the only change that I, that I, that I think that the substantive change that I think that was asked for was, was coming from Commissioner, uh, Leoni.
Compliance?
That has to do with the compliance, that's, I think that's the only substantive change that you're going to see.
And, and maybe a little bit of wording about, um, parameters will, that there will be some parameters about staffing, use of funding for staffing. Um, just mentioning that there will be, there will be parameters about using the funding for staffing.
And the recoverable grant, yeah.
And the recoverable grant.
And I'd like, from legal's perspective, I still would like to see that anyway, just to make sure and to flesh up based on this discussion that we're on, we understand and that that was reflected, um, in the policy as well. I still like to look at it.
When is our December meeting most given?
The twentieth?
Twenty eighth?
I mean, my staff can work with, with Chris to make the changes on, like tomorrow, like today. You know, it, it can be done very quickly and then we can run it by legal. And I mean, it can be, it can be, it can be done by, in my opinion, by the December to.
Okay, so we'll be able to get a draft?
And I just want an honest assessment from staff and from legal because they don't want it to come back if we're not ready.
I need time. I just need a little time. I think we need to hold it sometime. I mean, we'll do what we need to do, um, I just want to make sure it's tight.
And we can bring it back on a Monday as well.
Yeah.
We can be the nineteenth.
Yeah, we can bring him back on a Monday.
And we brought it back on the nineteenth, that gives a little more time for, I mean.
So let's, let's work through, make these changes. Betsy, once the changes have been made, once legal has reviewed it, if you could meet with every member of the court and if we can meet the nineteenth or the fifteenth, great. But if it needs to be pushed back a little bit, I'd rather it be done right and the questions be answered before we, we bring it back again. Um, but we can at least work toward either one of those two dates. But if it doesn't to go into early, uh, December, then we can. I mean, we have a meeting on the third. So, we, we have time and I think Commissioner Stout probably agrees that he just wants this to be done right as well, so. Um, let's just, let's just do it and then bring it back whenever we have it done.
Right, so we need to try to get legal the policy as quickly as possible.
Has, um, my other question is, has the purchasing fund consulted or?
Yes.
Have we already reached out to them?
Right.
Okay.
I stay copied you, but I'll forward them to your colleagues.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Commissioner, that's. Make sure everything is answered and come back when we're through with my.
I think that's a good idea. Okay.
All right.
Are we good?
Yes, and then we can now go into the economic impact fund.
Okay.
And thank you to the partners that were here today, we really appreciate it and the time and the diligence for coming in today. Um, I know it's taking a little bit longer probably than we anticipated, but again, it is the first time a county's ended in Texas, so better it be done right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This brings, this brings us to item number three. Receive a presentation.
Now, we're still on four.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. Good.
Okay.
Let me go on to where I left off, um, first slide there. That pretty much addresses what we're trying to do with this. We've given you two major bullet points there that cover a lot. And we didn't want to narrow it down to say what's really on this slide. It doesn't tell the story, it is, yes, we are looking at the target industries that this region wants. But I think we also need to open the door for other industries or other projects that don't fit the key industry spectrum, but are critical to the growth of our communities, of our region. And, and projects that I think are important to Commissioner's Court. Um, we talked about them in the past, air service expansion being, being one. Um, so critical that, that might be coming up. Uh, renewable energy, research and development. Betsy brought out the phone about a headquarters. And a headquarters that may not be in one of our key industries could, could be here. Um, and if, if we're going to step up to the, to the next plane, the next level of economic development, then we're talking headquarters, yeah, it makes sense to consider a headquarters project. Um, and so those are things that we wanted to float with you as, uh, this is, this is where we're going with it. But we, we wanted your input. And I know we, we, we went out and Arturo was out there asking for, for any invite, any input. But I think this is almost done. We're, this policy is pretty much where we wanted to go. We do want your guidance on, on, as we move forward through it.
And, I, I mean, I think this is going to be similar to our economic development incentive policies as that we will continue to make this a working document as things come up that you all identify or that we identify with the court as to something that would not have qualified under these restrictions, that you may want to broaden them. I, I was doing some research on the highest paying industries to make sure that all of them, if one of those industries came to El Paso with a proposal, that we would be able to use this fund for that, to attract that industry. And, you know, like I was telling Jose, one of the highest paying industries is, um, in the broadcast, uh, industry. And so if, you know, some large broadcast, uh, company wanted to come here and, and set up right now, now realistically, is that likely to happen? Not probably anytime in the near future, we're not, we're not at Times Square or, you know, but, but that, and it's not necessarily our niche market now. But I don't want the court to be limited if something with high-paying salaries, capital investment, um, that we would like to attract for our region comes to the table, that you all wouldn't be able to use this fund if you felt like it was going to add value to our community. And right now, the way this policy is written, it is restricted to the specific target industries. And with the, except for these, with these exceptions that we've added. And so I don't know if you all want to allow yourself an additional exception that gives Commissioner's Court the ability to consider some industry outside of these six plus the, the four or five exception areas. And, and I, I told them, I don't know that an Amazon falls under any of these categories perfectly.
Yeah, I mean, I think the purpose of the fund is to try to, you know, for whatever might come our way and the court says this is an amazing deal, for whatever reason, an executive session, the court decides, you know, full force, we should move forward. It should be fairly broad. I just don't know if other members of the court feel the same way.
Right, Chris, um, let's see, is there, have we looked into the possibility of some mispractices? Is there other comments, is there, even outside of, uh, Texas? Instead of reinventing the wheel, then we, we cherry pick from there and what fits us, prevent?
There, there are other, um, as a matter of fact, I had mentioned that while we were in Pittsburgh, one of the things we saw was they had set up an economic impact fund and, and how they had done it. And, uh, they did narrow in on some specific industries, but I don't know that they limited themselves. But I don't know that we pulled their policy. Um, but I know we did look at other.
Right, yeah, so through the research we've done through, uh, on this project is, um, there are other policies that have impact on the parameters of this one. And usually what the leadership does is that they just focus on a general area. Um, in this term, what we're presenting to you guys is something that's already relatable to El Paso. But, uh, based on the other impact funds that exist out there, um, they usually have a general sense. Um, they don't just leave it completely wide open, but rather just focus on something that will benefit their particular region. And it's something that, you know, we can focus on here as well. Um, if it's something that you guys, or if there's a specific region or a specific market that you guys want to target, this is where we would put it. Um, but based on the other ones, uh, they, they just do that, they base on, on the market. Um, they don't necessarily limit themselves, but at the same time, they don't, uh, open up the, the.
Right, so it's, it's, I, if we can add, like, so, um, like Pittsburgh, I know that they really focus heavily on technology and medicine. And, and there's two things, there's having a policy that says you can consider it for anything, but then there's also having strategic direction that tells us. but then there's also having strategic direction that tells us what you want us to focus on. So a policy, you can have a policy that's more broad, but then you can give through your strategic planning, through, you know, economic development planning, you can say, we are really interested in focusing on, and because it's all very integrated, um, you know, what do our schools produce? What, what does our, uh, market support, what, what workforce do we provide? Um, so, so that's, you have policy that says one thing, you have direction that says another, that can, that can narrow in further.
And just to add to that, you know, when we, Arturo did the research, we were seeing that in the state programs, the states have much broader policies, whereas the local community cities and counties that set up an economic impact fund, seem to be a little bit more detailed in their, in their direction of what we wanna do with it. So here again, it's up to you, we can go very broad, we can say anything that's, uh, high capital investment or quality jobs and just leave it at that, or we can be very detailed and pick what industries and what, uh, what you all want.
And actually, just to add on to that, I mean, that's specific to what, you know, the, the local, uh, agencies do. Is, they take the, the broad, uh, aspect of the state, which, you know, for example, Texas, the Texas Enterprise Fund focuses on jobs. But once you get to the local level, it's just dependent on the, of leadership of what market. Since you already have that additional support from the state level, um, this is where at the local level you can, uh, target, uh, specific areas.
Commissioner, did you wanna try to broaden it or leave it to these, uh, six areas?
You know, I, I favor having a, a broad approach, and, and I really appreciate all the work you all put into it, and this is great, and, um, you know, I know in the last presentation, you all, you know, brought up some other examples of how these funds are used. Um, but I think it's one of those things that, uh, you know, I think it's good to specify, but I think, you know, when, when we see a, a situation that, you know, where there are going to be quality jobs or a good industry and, um, you know, we're in a competition situation where there's another mid-sized, uh, county that, or, or community, whether in the southwest or throughout Texas, that's making a competitive offer, we just wanna, you know, be able to have the flexibility to, to compete. You know, I mean, whether we specify, I think it's good to specify that we'll have discretion, I mean, we always sort of have discretion to deviate, you know, from, from policy. But I sort of favor a broader approach, and I don't know what, uh, I don't know what you all think, but I think that might be easier for everyone, really.
I think we should probably keep a broad one, the court decide.
We're good with it, you like, we can just give a very broad approach and say, high impact projects that bring quality jobs or add a, a major economic benefit to the region, something like that. And so we don't have to, you all can decide depending on the value of each project. We'll do that.
I also want to say, you know, I also want to say, the, the, the response part has been really positive, you know, from, from the business community, I've also met with city leaders. I think we all met with economic development folks regarding the, uh, another recent advertising project. And, and the response has been really positive, I think people are really pleased that the county, um, has this and, and they're, they're excited at the prospect that our communities can have a, a good competitive edge when it comes to these types.
So this, uh, this next slide talks about eligibility again, we were still talking here mostly the key target industries because some of the exceptions wouldn't fit this, this eligibility, so obviously there, it's an exception. Uh, but if you're talking now about broadening it, then we, we'll just, um, completely, we can change all this as far as I'm aware.
And you may, you may still wanna have this kind of eligibility, like you would have categories saying if the, if it's a, um, incentive for, uh, uh, attracting a certain type of business, and don't, you don't say what type, but for attracting business, that there'd be this particular. But if it's, um, another category, you, you could have like, for example, the air initiative, the air service initiative is an initiative. Uh, attracting a new, um, uh, technology company is attracting business. So you have business initiatives and you have other initiatives. So when it's a business initiative, you could have standards like this. If the court like the, likes these standards.
Uncle Jose, I know that we've had the median county wage of thirteen fifty for the last few years, is it still thirteen fifty?
No, Commissioner Leon, uh, thirteen fifty went into effect this year.
So it's been, cause, uh.
Before it was thirteen eleven.
Thirteen eleven?
Yes.
And then I think before that, it was, we were down in the twelves.
Yeah, they were, so it changes almost yearly, you know, but we get that from the Department of.
Your labor statistics.
Okay.
Labor statistics.
Your labor.
Okay.
Yeah, it almost seems like if we're gonna broaden the scope of what can receive an incentive, that this would probably have to be broadened as well. Yeah?
So, so, so that's, you were saying, like, so, so for like the airline, for example, I mean, that's something that doesn't have cap, really a lot of capital investment, I mean, aside from airplane, I guess, but, uh, but not a lot of jobs directly tied, I mean, there's some ripple effects about the communities that we may tie to, but I guess how, how would we evaluate that?
So I think you would, you would value, you would split it up into two different types of requirements. Uh, initiatives would be evaluated on a case by case fa- basis. You all would, we would bring forward, this is the value it would add. So we would bring you forward a value proposition as to what that would add to the community. And sometimes it's not clear, like, it's not a capital, it's not necessarily a lot of jobs, but it helps support us in, um, attracting more companies, it makes us more attractive. Um, you, another one that comes to my mind is one that makes us have more utilities available to, to sustain a lar- large utility user, um, to attract businesses that are large utility use. So you would have initiatives, that, that one I imagine you would say for initiatives, they'll be evaluated on a case by case ba- basis, on the value added versus the incentive to be given. Then, um, business one, where there's an actual business one, you would have, uh, standards for business in, uh, incentives. And those, this would be for, when it's an actual business, whether you do want some capital, you do want some, so you almost have like two different types of incentives, one's for initiatives, one for businesses to actually develop. Um, you know, going back on the initiatives, it might be something that's agriculturally going to help our community in some way. And so that one would be assessed differently than, than a business.
And I think there was even discussion during one of the, well, no, I mean, that was, there are other initiatives that can take place that would be helpful, like, you know, if we were to do something out of FABs that isn't gonna bring in a business, but setting up the infrastructure to attract small businesses, you know, that might be a deal, so.
One of the areas that I asked a question on, the direct flight, uh, and, and I think it's in the process where maybe it's already been established, is from El Paso to Detroit, and highest white Detroit, because of all the maquetas in the area and the associated business here in El Paso, uh, where it's a indirect benefit to, to have those types of, of direct flights. As a matter of fact, I was talking to Robert Palacios a couple of weeks ago, and there's, uh, there's others planned with that saves, that kind of impact, uh, to El Paso.
Yes, there are, um, New York, San Francisco is another one that are key markets for air service. Okay, so we can tweak this to separate, as Betsy mentioned, suggested eligibility into two types, one that's for business initiatives and one that's for other initiatives, those that don't fit the criteria that we've talked about. That can be done quickly. Let me go on to this other one, just intended uses. What we did here, we broke it out into two, two major areas of economic development. Business attraction projects, uh, and then, and then we separated business retention and expansion. So in business attraction, you're gonna find a few more uses over here where we think that need to be identified, uh, for projects that need front-end, um, funding. And so we gave you a list of, of things that the funds could be used for. And on the BRE side, we gave you a shorter list of what can be done for that. Any suggestions on?
The, the PACE project that don't meet the savings.
Actually, yeah, we, we're expecting this question and I'm kinda glad, uh, I reached out to the PACE authority yesterday and I got a better answer, um, that way hopefully if anything is still in question, please, if you're asking any questions. Uh, so the PACE, uh, line here was says PACE projects that do not meet the one plus savings is related to the savings, uh, savings to investment ratio. So what that essentially means is that, uh, when you have a building, you wanna make sure that your, your savings are above what you, your cost would be. So if you're gonna be putting a HVAC system into a new building, wanna make sure that the savings, um, directly affect the, the, the cash flow. That way we are for sure that the business, um, can repay that, that loan, because essentially PACE is a loan. Um, it usually varies from fifteen to, uh, twelve to fifteen years. So, um, when they, they make this assessment, they wanna make sure that the, the business is able to, to, uh, right away start making the cash flow. Um, I actually pointed out something, but I'm not sure if, if I can just hold this out. Um, so this is pretty much, uh, the example that was, uh, brought to my attention. Um, and so this actually just kinda gives the, just like a, a brief overview of, uh, of a business in an HVAC system that would cost them one million dollars to, to implement. And, um, the savings, uh, throughout the, that fifteen-year long-term would be a one point five million, which would reach them to a, uh, savings, uh, investment ratio of one point five. So when we're talking about the PACE projects that do not meet this one plus, uh, we're talking about projects that, um, of course do not meet the savings, uh, uh, ratio. And the way that the county would, uh, jump into this is that there are other, uh, methods that, um, are involved in this process. So, one, once you're looking at, uh, the, uh, savings, um, for a particular building, um, there are other options. So let's say for example, second example of the county building, uh, the county building, of course, is full of mirrors. Um, if it did not have that, uh, thick layer of the protector on the windows, uh, the building would overheat. Um, the HVAC system would be on full-blown, uh, uh, rotation. And, I, I mean, of course, once you, you put that, uh, shield, uh, of course it reduces that, that cost. So in this example of the HVAC system, um, say for example, this is going through the same thing, um, what the county can do is it can, uh, create a, a small portion to just add that, that, that other layer, um, of the glass, um, to reduce that, that, that cost. So when you're looking at the, the savings ratio, that would, that would bring closer to the one, uh, plus, uh, savings ratio, um, by minimal costs to the county. So say for example, like, you know, the county decides to help a business out, um, by adding those, that thick layer to the, to the glass, um, the cost to the business will be reduced, uh, the savings to the business will be increased, and therefore it can meet the, the, the one plus savings, and therefore can go to PACE and, uh, ask for the loan. So, um, if there are any questions, again, please, please feel free to ask, um, now, that's, that was the explanation I was giving, it, it made sense to me, but again, um, if there are any further questions, please.
So, so if I understand, if a business comes in that currently exists and says, we'd like to stay in El Paso, but our building here is very inefficient, and it doesn't qualify for a PACE project, uh, because it's not gonna save as much as it's gonna cost to put the system in, but it is gonna save us some amount. They, they could come to us and apply for, for an incentive to help make their building more energy efficient.
Right, and, um, also another, another thing after speaking with the PACE authority is that a lot of the businesses here are very interested in, uh, applying for this PACE program. But because this is such a new program to El Paso, uh, not, and I won't say not all of them, but many of them are not sure how, how it works. So they don't know where to start, um, and in order to be able to meet this or even start the process of the PACE loan, um, you have to have a, uh, an assessor go in there and evaluate the savings that you would have. So, um, a lot of these can be done through either an engineer or an architect, uh, at a minimal cost, um, you know, maybe fifteen hundred dollars to twenty five hundred dollars. Um, and this is something, again, that the, the county can assist with, um, by either covering those fees, um, you know, again, you're talking about fifteen hundred dollars, twenty five hundred dollars, to be able to start the process and, uh, get people to, uh, know about the process, know about PACE, and therefore, um, you know, start, uh, uh, going more towards this project. Uh, we would not be the ones, of course, we have PACE authority, uh, doing this, these loans, we would not be doing the loans, we would actually just be given that, that kickstart into the, the, the community, being, uh, both more, more knowledgeable into this and, uh, applying more towards the, uh, PACE program.
So, in, in a nutshell, this could be an energy efficient, um, program that could, it, it would help a project that approaches us from that perspective. They said, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna move, um, to San Antonio, we're gonna move to Tucson, we found a nice building, we just rather invest there than here. Everything's the same, but we can, we could probably help them this ways to help them, um, re, uh, re-energize that building, making sure that their energy costs are much less than what they are experiencing right now to keep them here in El Paso. So the way I see it moving forward is if the project was looking at moving just because it was an energy issue for them, you could tap your economic impact fund to use it to help keep that business from going elsewhere.
So it would be in lieu of them being, getting the PACE program, we would pay for their, we would help pay for their updates instead of the PACE program?
No, no, that would still use the PACE program to, to do, uh, everything that they have to do. Um, they, they still need to get new lighting, they need to get HVAC systems, they need to, yeah, this, this would just, uh.
It helps them become eligible to use the PACE program.
Right.
It wouldn't be my initial, like, favorite project to use the economic impact fund for, but, and since we're trying to keep it broad, I mean, I, we might as well just leave it in there. Yes, that's just my opinion on that.
Hey, these are just suggestions, we, we can strike it out, yo.
Now I'm gonna.
I mean, no reason to strike off, I mean, you bring up a good example.
And, uh, obviously ineligible projects, we don't see moving forward of those that involve refinancing debt, um, buying out stockholders for a project, um, those that involve payroll compensation of whatnot, political religious activities or whatnot. Just, uh, things that are very obvious that wouldn't, wouldn't be a good use of your economic development impact fund. Okay, that's all I have on that, um. We don't have anything else, are we open to your comments?
Any other questions, Commissioner, it sounds like we're just gonna broaden this a little more, uh, and then bring it back, uh, for the court to consider at our next Thursday meeting, or are we taking this to a Monday?
Or we could, to go on Monday. We could add the broadened statement and then separate out the, um.
Yes.
Commissioner, do you all think it's ready for a Monday or bring it back on the fifteenth of November or whatever?
I'm fine, I mean, I think, we can get the list of ineligible projects, I mean, I think those are, those are pretty solid.
Yeah, we're gonna keep it very general, I guess.
What we'll do is we'll send you all a draft of the, of the changed version, and we won't put it on immediately, the Monday after we have the draft, we'll give it an extra week so you have time to review the draft and give us any feedback on it, and then we'll have it on for a Monday.
So we'll go into item three now, since you're already up here.
Okay.
Item number three, receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department on property assessed clean energy administrators' analysis and provide feedback on proposition from multiple administrators.
Jose Quinones, Economic Development Director. So, um, a staff went back and we, uh, we did some research on PACE programs nationally, we did some research on PACE programs and what our communities like, other cities and towns did. And kinda on a big spectrum, we, we looked at various, uh, states, California, Florida, Ohio, Minnesota, Wisconsin. Um, I think the one that we, we looked at more was the California model, I'm gonna ask Arturo to kind of pitch in where, where he can. Um, in Texas, it was adopted back in the twenty, twenty thirteen. Local governments are, do not, uh, do not restrict single administrators, we found, cities don't either. There's nothing in the state law that says you can't have more than one administrator, which is good. Uh, and it's only, we've only been in this program for two years, so, El Paso County, even though we've only had one program that's been, one pipe, one project, excuse me, Simon Properties, it's only been existing for two years when I came on board, and we, uh, we started working very closely with Charlene. We reached out to many, uh, nonprofits and business partners such as the Hispanic Chamber, the Greater Chamber, SBDC, SBA, and they've been helping all along, including the city of El Paso, the city of El Paso has been supportive of us. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, they're willing to, uh, help us with a, a small, small funding, funding. As a matter of fact, they're willing to help us with a, a small, small funding, funding source that they have to help aid and grow this PACE program. And so that's, that's been a good choice to have the city as a, as a partner and them also wanting to help out with it. Total investment in this Simon Property has just been over 2.2 million. I mean, the next slides focus on, on Lone Star PACE. And what we found about it is this was created just like two years ago here in Texas. Lima Formic is the owner of both Lone Star PACE, who also owns another business known as Community Development Associates. CDA, as it's known, is an agency or a company that, that does tax exempt bond financing. They are registered with the SEC, Security Exchange Commission. They, they know how to do government issues, services. And, and they also operate Sierra Management LLC in California.
Actually, I just want to make a small correction here on the first one. Since the report has been written, the Lone Star PACE has actually become a second administrator to Hayes County. That's one change that's, that has happened in the, in the, in the past few months. So, you know, well, again, just mentioned that there is no restriction on El Paso, how many administrators there can be. The state of Texas, as far as we know, there's only one county that has two administrators and that would be Hayes County.
So here's a quick comparison of our existing PACE administrator, Texas PACE Authority. And on the right side you'll see Lone Star PACE. So as you go through them, you'll see is Texas PACE Authority set up in a website. They're the ones that work to, to develop PACE in a box. They have a, a different entity known as PACE in a box, right?
Yes.
Program. And this model basically explains pretty much walks a property owner in, into what PACE is all about and how, how the financing is done, how the, the environmental analysis is done by a third party. PACE, Texas PACE Authority does not finance any deal. They do not do the, the site analysis of any project. So what they do is they work with other private parties to help facilitate the PACE deal to come to fruition. And that's what they did with Simon Properties is they worked with them, they, they worked with their engineers, they worked with their, their construction company, and they worked with their, their lender to, to set up the financing. That's what Texas PACE Authority does. They do not, they're not part of it. They do not collect a fee except for, but we'll go into it.
In fact, also, the biggest segue from, from the Texas PACE in the box, I mean, PACE in the box is that it separates all three entities. It separates administrator, lender, and the property owner. And the way it does that is that the, the administrator does not by any point become a lender itself. So therefore, when PACE Authority goes into these property owners, what it does is it gives them a list of potential loaners, loan officers, but it does not require them to choose from that list. And that's a major point that has to do with the, with this analysis is that it gives them that, that freedom for them to choose. Texas PACE Authority, Texas PACE Authority, what it does is, is just gives them that list of available lenders. And again, PACE in the box is just a model that creates this checks and balances to make sure that neither of these three parties are, you know, making a decision for another one. So there's no, the, the administrators are not advocating for lender and that the property owners are not being forced to choose a specific contractor or a specific construction company.
In regards to Lone Star PACE, there is some type of relationship there. The California Municipal Finance Authority, which acts as kind of like the, the administrator at the state level, has, through them, the, the, through Sierra Management, Sierra Management LLC serves as their financial advisor to CMFA. So there's a link there going on. And in this regard, they are able to issue tax exempt bonds over there in the, in the market. Any questions on this? So just to kind of look more closely at the administrators, this is how the, the rates compare. There's a five hundred dollar initial application fee that Texas PACE Authority charges an applicant. Lone Star would also do the same, is charged five hundred dollar fee. Texas PACE Authority does charge the app, an application fee, which is twenty five hundred dollars or one percent, whichever is, is lower.
Greater.
Is greater, excuse me, of the total amount of the assessment. So there's a, there's a fee there. And then there's a recurring administration fee of 0.25% that Texas PACE Authority charges. Lone Star PACE Authority would, would pretty much reciprocate that except that a little, a little less, 0.75% or twenty five hundred dollars, whichever is less. And they would also assess a recurring administration fee of 0.1%. Those as the, those are what we found in terms of similarity in terms of fees. So our recommendation is that, yes, we're, we are open to multiple administrators. We don't at this point necessarily recommend Lone Star PACE Authority. They don't, they don't have any record, we didn't find here in Texas, that they have a record of administering a PACE program in any part of Texas. Although recently we did hear about Dix County allowing for a second administrator being Lone Star PACE authority. I think what we, we do recommend is that we come up with some criteria that maybe you all can consider for, for any administrators that, that you should consider. And you, you may want to change that, that criteria, but it's just kind of some suggestions on, on those that you want to consider for being a, a multiple administrator here in El Paso County. And in the, in your evaluation as an attachment, you will find in our recommendations breaking up. You go through them quickly here on the last page of the PACE evaluation. We have the requirements. If PACE administrator must have experience managing commercial PACE projects. The administrator must agree to provide financial transparency. We think it's important that any PACE administrator not have any possible conflict of interest with say a lender or an engineering firm or construction company that's going to be involved in the deal. And that's what we're referring to. And a PACE administrator should also agree not to have any financial interest with any PACE vendor, thereby eliminating any potential conflict of interest. Those are our, our, you know, simple recommendations that we think you all need to consider as if you want to set up a, a multiple administrator system in the county.
And we wouldn't have to go out to bid to have multiple administrators in this case? And we could just allow for two, three, five? Doesn't, doesn't matter?
Hey, you could if you wanted to, but it's not necessary.
Okay. So it sounds like for today's purposes at least, thank you for the research and the presentation. It's helpful. I know this was brought before the court several months ago. And so at least we have a little clarity on Lone Star PACE. I don't know if there is anyone else that has approached the county to be another administrator. And so up until that point, we continue forward with our current, uh, our current, yeah.
Administrator.
Administrator and, and.
Wait, wait. I do think what we've heard from the board and what we need to make sure we've relayed to Charlene is, I, I think we've said this, but I mean, we want to see more projects. That, that's one of the things we've heard from the court is that two years, one project, we, we would like to see, have seen it be used more often.
And I think getting a timeline from Charlene as to how many times she can come to El Paso, how many presentations are being made to some of the industry folks and what the strategy is to educate people about the PACE program. Part of what was mentioned earlier was that a lot of people have a lot of interest, but they don't know how it works. Well, that's their job to, to do that. And so we need to find out what they're doing to clarify that.
Commissioner.
Um, did we, did we apply those same, um.
Standards?
Standards to the, the, the administrator we have right now? Because as far as I, as far as I know, there were, I mean, it was fairly opened up in the state of Texas and they came and talked to us and they didn't have any experience in, in, in any types of projects. They were, it was a new, it was a brand new, um, brand new operation that they, that they started up. And so I just want to make sure that we're applying the standards we're, that, that we're applying to everybody that we're, we're dealing with. Because it doesn't seem to me that, um, that, that the authority that we have, that, um, Charlene's authority had any experience when, when we, when we allowed them to come on. Good opportunity for them to want.
Yeah, actually, Commissioner, when we first were introduced to the PACE authority, when Charlene came to us, at that time they had twelve projects that they had completed already in the state of Texas.
Okay.
Yeah, and the reason why we mentioned California as the, the main, I guess, contrasting model was because a lot of the states that are outside, of course, Texas, they base mostly on residential PACE projects. And that differs from, from what we do here in Texas simply because with residential projects, you can do individual houses.
Yeah, like residential is just commercial.
Right. And, and what we want to do is we want to make sure that when we're getting these administrators that come to the county, that they have the experience in the commercial aspect rather than just residential because they vary quite, quite differently.
Well, maybe they can come back any year after they've done some projects with the, talk to us.
Yeah, for a while, I don't know if the commissioners had the same issues, but they, both PACES were calling my office. I guess there's some differences of opinion between them. And I got to a point and said, hey, you've got something to say, just say it to the entire court. I don't know what you all's experience has been.
Well, one was trying to get in, one was trying to keep him out. That was.
Sir, we, we just want to make sure that you know that we did the research on it and we're very neutral on going to. Even though we were getting bombarded also with emails, it was trying to just look at the facts, get the information, all of that, each other's own viewpoint, but just get the facts out. That's what we wanted to report to you, the facts of what is and what isn't. And, and give you a, a simple recommendations moving forward, how to approach this.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
What other entities are there? I mean, if we say we're gonna open it up more, are there others? Or by saying it and not with the requirement that you have to dump stuff in Texas and nobody's done stuff in Texas, is it gonna?
So we're aware of there's no, no other registered ones of PACE authority administrators in Texas. But again, in the case of the Lone Star PACE, they actually came from California. So it's not to say that somebody from Michigan or somebody from another PACE authority would start a, a new project here.
They don't have to have experience in Texas. They just have to have experience managing a commercial project.
I think Lone Star PACE was really vested in working on residential.
They have California. So they've, they've done no commercial at all, just.
In California, in California they have three. It's a commercial, three commercials.
They have that commercial?
Three commercials, but most of, most of their portfolio is in the residential area.
I remember them talking to me about movie theaters.
That's what they want to do here.
So it sounds like everything maintains and stays as is. And if there is another, if we are approached by another entity, then we would consider those on a case by case basis as long as they meet some of the criteria that has been laid out and they, those would come back to the court for consideration. Is that correct?
We can, we can do that if you all accept our recommendations. You can use that as the framework. If someone comes to us, we'll, we'll give a recommendation to the court, whether you do it or not.
And what's, you know, and what's the threshold then for experience that we're asking? How many projects or, I mean, cause if these, these guys have done three and the other one has done twelve? I mean, what, what's the, what's the golden?
It, it can be done two ways, either by the number of projects or by the amount that has been invested into these projects. Of course, when we're looking at Texas PACE Authority, one of their, their measurements is, you know, the amount of money that has been invested. So they might have one project that's, you know, six million and they might have no project that's thirty two million. So it's just really up to the court whether you guys want to determine the weight of the project or the number of projects that have been.
But if you're recommending the other not be included because they've only done three projects, what were those three projects and what was our balance? Cause that would bring up a part of conversation.
Um, that one actually I, I can get you that information.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, we're sitting there saying.
Right.
They didn't do a commercial, but they've done three commercials. But it's up to the court, but the court has no idea what, what they've done. It doesn't feel like it's up to the court.
But almost seems also like the larger question is, do we want more or do we just stick to one?
I, I, I think the answer very simply is the one is not getting the information. The one for two years and they have one project. And that's my frustration is, I don't trust any organization that says that we should have a monopoly.
Right. And I, and I, you know, I, I don't know if the memo, I should, I thought the memo said something a little bit different on the recommendation that I read in the backup. But I thought there was also a concern in your documentation about not, no conflict of interest.
Uh, well, what we had here is really where we, we want to make sure that there is no conflict of interest with a potential, with a administrator, that they're not playing lender and they're not playing contractor at the same time. So I think they need to be financially transparent and we would make sure of that when we vet it. To make sure is if there's a, if they're playing two roles here, do we want that? Because that's what Texas Lone, Texas PACE Authority does. They don't play but one role. They're the administrator and they don't have a conflict of interest. So, and I think if we find out that they do, then that's, then we will let you know and you all can decide what you want to do at that point.
But we will get the amount of the three projects that Lone Star has done in California? So we can compare it to what PACE has done in Texas to see if it's something that we should consider further.
I, I, I just, I mean, y'all's recommendation is no because they have not done it, but we don't know what they've done. And that's, I guess, my frustration.
Yeah, we, we have it somewhere in our notes, but we don't recall it right now, Commissioner. But we'll get that to all the court.
Okay. So, any other questions, Commissioners?
Okay, Commissioner, and I know you have to leave at eleven fifteen. Is there a particular item that you would like to, for the next eight minutes considered? Or are you okay with maybe one?
I'm, I'm okay. The number five, we're going to the heat. Pepsi, is that correct?
Heart space?
Yeah. Uh, thank you.
So then we'll go ahead and go to item number one.
Thank you. Or item number two. Item number two pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code Section 114.023, 114.024, 114.025, and 114.026. Please accept the attached presentation and the interfinancial report for the month ended September 30th, 2018. The interfinancial report is located on the intranet at http://colin/forwardslashwww epchemy.com forward slash auditor, forward slash publications, forward slash monthlyreports dot htm.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Jim Otteback, Audit Manager Senior for the Financial Reporting Division of the CAC and its office. We have our convinced financial report that was published in the paper on October 21st. This report gives you is our fund balances, our budget, year-to-date expenditures, year-to-date encumbrances, and the available year-to-date budget. Any questions on this?
You can note on there, the general fund shows ninety one eight million right now. This is a preliminary CAC report. We still have accruals. We have bills coming for. Later on, we'll talk about what my projection is, which is probably about five million dollars less than that, which is better than last year still. So we're still showing positive trend, but that's, that's a preliminary number just based on where the revenues expenses settled right now. And it does include some accruals, some of the revenues.
Going into the revenues. Our revenues is for the month of September, we had sixteen point six million in general fund. Year-to-date is two hundred and seventy one million. Overall, our revenues for the month was twenty three point seven million and four hundred and fifty three million for all departments. A comparison of our revenues to the prior year, current year, we had property taxes, one hundred and sixty million compared to seventeen, where we had one hundred and fifty six million. So we had about three point seven million change in property taxes, sales tax. We had an increase of two point four million. Intergovernmental came down and that is. The decrease is due to timing. the decrease is due to timing difference on state child support, also on animal control services agreement and individual defense reimbursement.
But I have a quick question, so this shows motor vehicle taxes down slightly?
Yeah, slightly, it's a decrease, yeah.
I think that's just, we just have to remember to correlate that when we talk about new vehicles with the tax office and their, their demand for services.
Well, but I thought you said that sales tax, I thought last meeting it was said that sales tax, sales vehicles have gone up.
Sales tax is up, but sales tax on vehicles appears.
Auto sales tax.
Your auto sales tax is down about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, we've had years where it's gone up and up, and it came below my projection. But we expect it, it's going to rebound again if you drive it out, but you see all these paper plates out there, so. The, the tax assessor is optimistic that it's gonna, it's gonna increase. He said this year, he's seen it, but there's a lag in when the money comes from the state.
Oh, paper plates get bought in stores.
Yeah.
I know Gavin's running from his car. He's running his car, so those paper plates from eight years ago.
Fines and forfeits are also down, eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. The decline there is a decrease of four-hundred-and-sixty K on judgment settlements compared, due to a one-time settlement we had in seventeen, skewed the numbers. Cases filing have increased to nine-hundred, by nine-hundred, nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-seven cases. Fines assessed increased by one-point-six million, but the collected amount has decreased. FY eighteen, it's down about twenty-two percent.
And it's usually cyclical, sometimes your collections go up, people pay more, so they vary from year to year.
Interest rates went up by nine-hundred-and-eight, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. This due to increases in the interest rate, also to, we've gotten more aggressive in moving our funds into higher investments we are allowed to, which was taxable prime. Revenue compared to the budget. We had a budget of two-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-six million. We collected in year-to-date actuals is two-hundred-and-seventy-one million. So we have a slight over the budget by one-hundred-and-three percent on collections. Again, the leaders on that were sales tax. Was up over the budget by estimated amount by one-hundred-and-four percent. Charges for services, one-hundred-and-twenty-two percent. Licenses and permits, one-hundred-and-ten percent. Interest, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent of what we budgeted. Misaligous revenue, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven percent, other financing sources, one-hundred-and-forty-one percent. Just another breakdown of our amounts collected, all revenue. And you see, we're running about the same, where we collect about one-hundred-and-three percent of what we budgeted overall. Is property tax, and this runs cyclical. You see, in twenty-sixteen, we're at ninety-nine-point-seventy-one percent of what we budgeted. We're at a hundred-point-two-six percent of what we budgeted in seventeen, and we're at ninety-nine-point-five-nine percent of what we budgeted in eighteen. Sales and use tax, we've been running above our budget, one-hundred-and-three percent in sixteen, one-hundred-and-one percent in seventeen, and one-hundred-and-four percent in eighteen. Expenditures. We'll focus again on the general fund, general fund we had is much late, is twenty-six million in expenditures. Overall for the year is two-hundred-and-sixty-three million expenditures. And if you look at our annual trend, it's running about the same, we're spending about the same amount every single week compared to the prior year.
Do we spend less this year than on previous years?
We have spent.
At the moment, I'd say yes. This, this time last year, we actually presented the September report in November. At that point, we had spent two-hundred-and-fifty-five million, actually you spent more, two-sixty-three.
You spent two-sixty-three.
We just spent it earlier in the year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the, the other thing I'll point out is that last year at the end of the year, you had three-point-six million dollars in encumbrance. This year you have five-point-two million in encumbrance, so you didn't expend it yet, it's still out there in POs, and you'll be spending it, it'll be rolling over to the next fiscal year.
I see, I see.
Okay, but you did spend more this fiscal year compared to the prior. Two-fifty-five versus two-sixty-three, so far.
Yeah, you have an overall increase of about seven million or two-point-eight.
It's better than August, it's September, though.
So overall, our expenditures compared to prior year, we have spent two-hundred-and-sixty-three million this year, two-hundred-and-fifty-six last year. And so we have a seven-million-dollar increase in what we've expended this year compared to last year. Again, big operating, big expenditures have been in salaries of five million, personnel benefits, one-point-four million, or total of six-point-six million in personnel expenditures over prior year. We had overall operating expenditures up by three-point-five million. Capital outlays was only up a hundred-and-eleven thousand, and transfers out, we had a decrease there of three-hundred-and-one million.
Is it me, or is the benefits?
I mean, three-point-one million.
Outweighing the personal salaries in committee, it looks like our benefits went up twenty percent, but our salaries didn't, so how does that happen? Or aren't they, shouldn't they be kind of equal in percentages of increases?
We'll have to look at the detail, because some of the stuff on the general administrative account actually goes into that account. You put in extra money for into the retirement system, I think that was a half a million dollars. We, we can actually provide some additional detail. The other thing was you have to realize that some of this personnel offsets with the operating, you know, there was an outsourcing of the sheriff personnel that used to be, I think there were, I don't know if they were on the payroll. You had a, you had a inmate medical, now it's contracted out.
Oh, what you said, I mean, if the additional money we agreed to put in for retirement.
Half a million, it's benefits.
But I mean, it seems like it should, they should kind of go up and down, it's a ratio.
It's the additional, more than likely it's the additional retirement.
Okay, that answers my question.
But, but normally it's around our, overall, it'd be about twenty-eight percent increase in benefits, that's including health and everything, as, as a ratio of increase in, in personnel.
Yeah, looking at our budget compared to, for expenditures for last year, we had year-to-date expenditures at this time of eighty-nine-point-seven percent compared to eighty-seven-point-five-six percent, because we expanded our budget. And this year, we have twelve percent remaining budget this year compared to a remaining budget of ten percent last year. Breakdown of current year's budget is we had forty-five percent was public safety, administration justice was twenty-five percent, general government was twenty-three percent, and all other functions was five percent. And to give you a dollar breakdown, is public safety was under twenty million, general government was sixty-one million, administration justice, sixty-six million, and all others was fourteen million. This is comparison of our expenditures by function, the budget, to the year-to-date actuals. So our year-to-date actuals for general government was seventy-two percent. Of the budget, for administration justice, they've spent ninety-three percent. For public safety, they've spent ninety-six percent. Health and welfare, they've spent eighty-three percent. Community services, fifty percent. Resource development, eighty-eight percent. Culture and recreation, eighty-five percent, and public works, eighty-three percent.
And upon that, which, which accounts, you know, with seventy-two percent expended on the general fund, I guess, there has to be certain accounts that are accounting for that.
General government.
No, I know, but that's, I mean, but what is it, is it personnel, is it operating?
The contingencies is one thing that we don't always spend.
Yeah, a lot of it's out of the general administrative account, that's under your control.
Okay.
Reserve for salary increases, there's multiple accounts in there.
Okay.
And there's some operating accounts, but I see the most of it's fringe, payroll and fringe.
And again, a lot of this is contingencies are in the general government, so those will not be spent unless we have a very specific thing. And we do exclude the thirty million that we have for emergency contingencies, just because that would really skew the numbers.
Okay.
But we can get a report with the detail and shoot to you.
It just goes to speak when we talk about the fund balance and our unextended funds, it's just something we got to be mindful of.
Okay, and this is our fund balance.
And as I, as I said, the, the financial report that Jim presented says ninety million right now. The encumbrances, assuming everything had been spent and we didn't have encumbrances to carry forward, that's five-point-three million dollars alone. So that brings you down to, you know, around eighty-four. I'm projecting at this point that we're going to end up between eighty-three, eighty-five. This time last year, when the monthly report was presented, I think in November, it was a projection of eighty-five-point-four. After the CAFR finalized, was finalized, it ended up about eighty-three million. So it, it's pretty close, pretty close, and I expect it's going to still be around that, around eighty-three, eighty-five. I, I think we're going to make, make good gains over the prior year. And like I say, our, our encumbrances have grown over this time last year by one-point-six million. So there, there's stuff in the pipeline still that didn't get on the books because we, they didn't get expended, things didn't happen, but they will be happening in the new fiscal year.
Any questions?
And if there's anything on these reports, if there's information that you all have a preference for, that we're not presenting to you, if you want something different, I mean, let us know. We're here to, to give you what you want and what you need, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We are committed to accepting.
Yes.
Yes, yes, it's accepted.
So move.
Second. Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Liam is absent. Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Hager?
Aye.
Judge Bo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to move to, uh, we're not deleting five, we're just performing, or we're deleting?
You can delete five, I won't bring it back.
Okay, so move to delete.
Five seconds. Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Hager?
Aye.
Judge Bo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're going to take the executive session item first before we take up item six.
Done for, Mr.? Uh, yes.
I think we need a little, we need a twenty-minute break.
Yeah, you're not supposed to take it until eleven forty-five.
Okay. And if we can recess and then come back at eleven forty-five.
And we'd love your input on the room.
I'd like it.
Yeah, we could talk about that too, I.
It's not official action or anything like that.
I feel like my.
We need a German, I just want to hear from you individually, like on the room setup, if there, you know, what you'd like to see, you know, what we can do.
I, I didn't, I didn't need some space.
Yeah.
A little closer.
Yeah, okay, so we'll sort of, we'll, uh,
Recess.
recess for now, and then we'll come back at eleven forty-five, okay?
Commissioner, our court is in recess till eleven forty-five.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine-one-five-five-four-six-two-zero-four-eight. contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine one five, five four six two zero four eight.
The district attorney invites you to join the ten-mile walk for victims of crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the county courthouse promptly at seven AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call nine one five, five four six two zero nine one.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at seven thirty AM at Danny's Diner located at forty-six ninety Trans Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk location.
Just for, no, just for you all.
Where's the other thing?
It's not there anymore. We talked about that, we'd like to have something like that back for us.
What?
Okay.
The panel?
The screen?
The panel tells you if it's on or off?
Commissioners Court has reconvened in the special open session. Judge, would you like to go into executive session at this time?
Please.
Okay. So, item number seven, addendum to the agenda. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss item number seven pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthenumber2coastrx.com.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call (915) 546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 AM at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast-the-number-two-coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; And suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call (915) 546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 AM at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast-the-number-two-coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; And suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; And suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call (915) 546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 AM at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast-the-number-two-coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; And suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-piece cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
Yes, sir. I have until yesterday.
Okay, no one go?
She has until yesterday.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened a special open session. Item number six, receive a presentation from the Public Works Department on the comprehensive county space master plan study.
Where'd you wait?
Second.
I got no moment I'm scheduled to talk.
Commissioner Perez?
I was...
Commissioner Stapp? Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge, vote.
Aye.
Motion players.
Ow!
Yeah.
If not, I can even...
I think that is it for this afternoon, so thank you all so much for a great weekend weekend.
And...
But we're in schedule, so that's good.
Thank you, Judge. This concludes today's meeting at 12:40 p.m.